Thank you, sir.
And the business plan for this year announced to climb on a marathon.
Years ago, Rockwell Chamber had their retreat there. He couldn't go, so he invited me to go at time.
Yeah, this is, um, I have been. Worst case, if I talk with this place, it has a lot of experience.
Very good anniversary. So, six hours, I think there's twenty or thirty.
I was gonna say.
All this in front.
Well, guys, hello.
See, uh, what we're doing is. Let's go say this, very small corner. So, you got, you got a little more.
No, yeah, no. So, no problem. And then some of them make her here to talk. So, I just tell them just the way it is.
What do we have this week?
Don't.
I don't know who took that one. You won't try to go next song?
Get any more feedback, probably.
Mr. Daltrey.
Yeah, he's, he does his own. It's a forty-five, like, big thing.
It's made of aluminum.
Right now, yes. But, that's another, you know, to get, since we've been through the first month, you get like, eighty years.
And this one, I'm saying, you know.
I don't know.
I'll take, yeah, that would, that would be good.
I sit down.
They just, they're usually not sure what they got to hit the backwards, like, you know.
Not before down.
Now, I know that. Michael, did you hear? You just count your board, you just see. They have this. Yes. But this was.
We should. I'm sorry.
What voice?
I didn't know.
You want us to? You want us to? Could put stuff on my channel.
They gave me your email address. I knew when I said goodbye.
She's sending me this, like, school. None of them, you know, get like seventeen down.
That's what we're thinking about.
We have this today.
Was that?
I don't have any. This was, she's out. I'm living trouble.
You have a central, you have a wish. The only love of bringing my passion was I never got it. Just reading those. I think it's, yeah, I feel like you might resent that.
Yeah.
He doesn't have to make me say. First meeting I've ever had doing that.
Really, really, it's a huge, you know, big, uh, point.
So, she, yeah, so she's.
Know, like, going home and reading the Overlook, right? Yeah, I find that, yeah. You take a couple.
Yeah, I don't think paper for at least a month.
Well, I'm like, you strike. How do you like it, Ed?
Thank you.
Five hundred and half minutes sometimes.
Especially some people. It's so much. Yeah.
And there's, there's some more seats up here at front, if, uh, if you like.
Thank you.
When's that?
We sit down and, and, uh, we just sit at the back. I always stand.
So. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to call the, uh, October, the, 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 some kind of information to order. Mr. Evans.
Yes, sir. Please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call Ms. Natalie Best to give us our safety instructions for tonight.
Good evening. To provide for the safety of those attending this meeting, please listen to the following instructions in case of an emergency. First, please take a moment to note where your exits are. If an emergency arises that prompts us to evacuate, please exit the room in a quick and orderly manner through one of the two doors to your right, and then proceed to the nearest stairwell, directions to which are indicated by the exit signs. Once you exit the building, we ask that you safely cross Ramble Street, which is the street that runs inside our building, to our parking lot to be safely away from the building. Our staff will provide additional direction and assistance as needed. In the case of tornado warning, please exit this room into the hallway, where we remain until it is safe to exit. In any event of an active shooter in the building, if there is an accessible escape path, please run and try to evacuate the premises. If you can't evacuate, please find a place to hide where you are less likely to be found and lock any doors that you can. And as a last resort, and only if your life is in imminent danger, please fight. Our staff will provide additional assistance on what to do. Thank you for your attention.
Mr. Evans.
That's great. Your heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here together, where we ask you to continue to keep us on one accord. Oh, we thank you for life, health, and strength. We ask that we stay on one accord and do the business of discounting to the best of our ability. In your son's name we pray, thank you.
Uh, you have, in the dinner parties, indeed, two, uh, minutes, we took previous meetings, uh, no additional corrections to have a question?
Seven.
Questions? All in favor of, you know, like, votes, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? There are none. Men's law.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask if you would consider adding one item to your agenda. Uh, you have a copy at your seat. It is regarding the Edgecombe Community College budget request acknowledgement. And, uh, if you'd be so kind to add that, we'll add that as item G.
No objection. And, uh, I need you so added. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to request, if you know, we've lost him, uh, former commissioners, the Roman, Dr. Thomas said, welcome, uh, ask that we have a moment of silence, but it's time for this. And then. At the time, we have no scheduled appointments. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, if you're going to public hearings, uh, if you, if you have not signed up, you can all turn to sign up at this time, because once we start the public hearing, if you're not on the sign up list, you're not be allowed to speak. If anybody would like to speak at the public hearings, then I'll sign up. Here are none. Disappears with you. Please, uh, read the, the public, read the notes.
Yes, sir. Call this one, the public. Public notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Commissioners of Edgecombe County on Monday, October sixth, twenty twenty-five, at six o'clock P M. in the Jonathan Felton Commission, Room Second, County Administrative Building, two oh one San Andrew Street, Tarver, North Carolina, to amend the Unified Development Ordinance. The proposed tax amendment will add data center and crypto mining operations and their related terms and standards to the applicable sections of the Edgecombe County Unified Development Ordinance. Copies of the proposed amendments are available for public inspection during business hours, eight A M. to five P M. In the county planning office, room two zero five, County Administrative Building, two oh one San Andrew Street, Tarver, North Carolina. All parties interested, all interested residents are invited and urged to be present and make their views known. This, the twenty-fifth day of September, twenty twenty-five. By order of the Board of Commissioners of Edgecombe County, taking face in court to the board.
The servants.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call up Mr. Durbin Spell, our planning director, who will give us an overview of proposed amendments to our Unified Development Ordinance.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, and as was explained, um, the county has applied to amend the U D O to allow for crypto mining operations and data centers and associated, uh, language to be, um, included in the Unified Development Ordinance. Data centers and crypto mining operations, uh, will be permitted in the general industrial M two district, and which data centers will be permitted by right, and crypto mining operations will be permitted, um, after going through the conditional rezoning process. Both users will also be allowed in the, under the planned development process. As you see, uh, the map here, that shows the areas in the county, which are currently zoned, the M two zoning district, with the larger one being the Kingsborough Business Park, and then the smaller one in the northwestern corner, uh, being an area near the intersection of Cool Springs Road and N C ninety-seven. This amendment would add a neighborhood meeting requirement to our conditional rezoning and plan development process, in which, uh, the applicant will have to have a neighborhood meeting prior to submission of application for any, um, any proposal, they'll have to go through either one of those processes. Um, staff would like to make of, uh, another recommendation that language will be, to be added regarding notification that applicant also, uh, put notice in the newspaper, a minimum of ten days prior to the neighborhood visit, the neighborhood meeting.
That's, that's, that's added, like, staff.
Yes. Yes, and, you know, that's the section that we'll add that language to, or propose that language be added to. Regarding setbacks and buffers, in the original draft, a setback was set at fifty feet. Uh, the planning board recommended that the setback be increased to a hundred feet. Also, uh, regarding the setback, uh, setback was to be increased to five hundred feet for any, uh, project that occurs bordering a parcel that is zoned in a residential zoning district. Planning board, uh, made the recommendation that that thousand feet only applies to residential zone parcel that has an existing or approved dwelling unit. And regarding the buffer, the type C buffer, which would be a minimum of forty feet wide, would be required. Uh, additional buffering and landscaping may be required to, uh, that was this, the development and meeting, um, sound, um, regulations as needed. There currently aren't any height requirements in the M two district. However, if you have any applications that go through the conditional rezoning or plan development process, um, such requirement could be proposed by the commissioners, and it'd be up to the applicant to accept those conditions.
Uh, question. Existing and or approved dwelling, give me a difference.
Yes, so, of course, existing, you know, existing in its form, approved meaning that they, um, the applicant, or someone has received zoning permit and building permit, but they haven't built, uh, dwelling, um, at this point. So, so, so the permits is.
Old barn over, if there's an old barn over, is that, is that a dwelling?
A barn?
Okay, I'm not good.
No.
Go ahead, uh, any further comments? Any questions?
He has more.
Go ahead, excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to stop.
Hold on this one. Okay, as regarding maximum noise levels, um, so, we have noise levels set at, or proposed noise level to be set at for projects that borders properties that have an existing or proposed dwelling to sixty D V As during the day and fifty D V As during the night. Um, some more language that staff recommends to be added is to define daylight hours to be from seven A M. to six P M. And cases where, you know, you have operations, um, that do not share where, which the neighboring properties do not have a dwelling on it, existing or proposed. In the original draft, um, the decibels was set to go as high as seventy-five D V As. However, the planning board recommended those be lowered to sixty, and that'd be twenty-four hours a day. And as you see, there's, uh, a chart showing a D V A level, so sixty would be like. So sixty would be like if you and I having a regular conversation, or you go into a grocery store, restaurant, hearing background music. Seventy-five would be like you running the vacuum cleaner. And regards to utility usage, um, the data centers must, or we propose that they submit an annual attestation of electrical and water capacity from public utility providers as part of annual zoning compliance permit requirements. The electrical attestation requirement would be waived for projects that generate their own, uh, electricity. Um, staff, in our review, we also recommend that additional language should be added so that it makes, that it, uh, makes it clear that the annual attestation, along with the zoning permits each year, would be required, and not just, you know, when they receive their initial building permit. And that's a picture of the section in which, and arrow showing where that language would be inserted at.
Question?
Yes.
Even if they generate their own electricity and they do the attestation, we can still make them attest, if they say they'd stop producing their own electricity, they would still have to attest to how much electricity they would need at that time, correct?
A annual?
Yes. So that would still, even, even if they say they're, they're gonna generate their own power, they would still have to attest if they didn't generate power, how much power they would necessarily need.
Yes. And regards to on-site generators, on-site generators shall be fully enclosed, meet relevant fire standards, and shall require, receive all required state permits. And that was in the original draft. Um, planning board recommend that federal permits, uh, be added also to that requirement.
And then, questions? The servants?
Yes, sir, I think Mr. Spell covered it.
At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna call for, uh, public comments. I understand that some of you might be here, uh, to, uh, state your petitions as to who this board might select as the next commission. You can hold, I will call for those comments at public petition, not during this session, this session, or this public hearing won't apply to those that want to come to speak to this particular, at this particular time. Is anybody signed up? Let's face it, some to speak.
Robert Casanova.
Which come for, Casanova?
Thank you for allowing me to comment. Uh, just a little bit about my background. Well, we, Bob Casanova, we live at ten eighteen Benson Farm Road, which is out in the country from, from Battleboro. And, uh, my background, I'm, I'm a retired aerospace engineer. I've had four decades of experience, and some of that experience included noise control. And so I have some questions about noise control with this, with this project. Uh, another one of my activities lately has been astrophotography, and that relates to my other comments about the lighting at night, which, uh, is not even specified in any of the amendments, that I could tell. Uh, generally, I'm supportive of industries that would create jobs and provide an extension or expansion of the tax base. I think that's a great idea. But it must be done right. Uh, I think a lot of the current, uh, regulations across the state don't really address the future. And so what I'm trying to do is address the future and, and make Kingsborough sort of a shining example of way it should be done. I have, uh, well, two, two areas of concern. I know there are other areas of concern, of concern that people have. Two that I'm going to try to address are noise, and let me talk about that. Uh, whenever you have a source of noise, like a generator or any, any piece of equipment, it's the low frequencies that tend to travel farther. So your measurement of D B level is not gonna really indicate the annoyance factor when you have a booming type of noise that carries maybe a mile or two, uh, whereas high frequencies will be attenuated and much easier to handle with the low frequencies. So I don't know, in your specifications, if you need to try to address that and put some mention of at least, uh, the frequencies that will be allowed outside a certain distance from the generator. And I don't know if the noise levels are specified at the generator itself or at the property line. Uh, of course, if you control them at the generator's location, that's great. Uh, putting up walls around a generator is usually not enough, because the sign will bend over the wall and, and you can hear it maybe a mile or two away, depending on the frequency. So that, that's one concern I have, is just how detailed that specification is going to be. Uh, the other area, which is not even addressed anywhere that I could tell, is lighting at night. Uh, there's been a rising concern about no, uh, light pollution. If we, if I stand in my backyard, and we're out in the country, but if I stand out in my backyard and look to the north, I can see the light pollution from Roanoke Rapids. I look to the south, I can see the light pollution from Rocky Mount. If I look to the east, I see Tarboro. And I realize this one location is a small part of that. But you need to start now to plan for the future so that you don't keep adding to this light pollution. It affects the migration of animals. And, uh, frankly, it affects my astrophotography. Because if you have all this light pollution, it really destroys the image you have of the skies. So, uh, and, and I have more information about the light pollution. There is a, a really good website called darksky.org that has a wealth of information about light pollution and what you can do about it. The technology for limiting light pollution is available. And I expect it might even be cheaper in the long run than current lights that you use, say, around the parking lot. And I'll leave these copies. Uh, there's articles in there about how it affects, how light affects humans, how it affects animals, and what you can do about it. The technology, as I say, is available. And if they just essentially switch their design of their parking lights, parking lot lights to take advantage of this kind of technology, I think the problem of light pollution from this particular site could be alleviated. So it's just something to think about, and I hope you will take it seriously. Uh, the other thing is, I guess, uh, sign of ignorance on my part is to how you enforce these regulations. And, and the reason I'm sensitive is, we have a lot of solar farms around us out in the country. And some of these solar farms had specified that they would put a vegetative barrier around their solar installation. And if you go by most of these, boy, these are scrawny-looking vegetative barriers. Uh, I know one's been there five years, and the, and the vegetative barrier is still only like two or three feet high. And so I, I'm concerned about enforcement of noise, light pollution, if you go that route, and other things that may come up. So what is the process for enforcing all of these kind of things? Does the commission take part of that? Does the county do it? Just, does the federal, does the federal government do it? Who does it? So, my comments. Thank you.
Okay, questions, stay right there. I, I have some questions, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just talked about light pollution, is that simple downlighting? I know that was a comment that was made last Thursday at our meeting, and we, we talked about that as well.
Right.
Is that as simple as putting in there that down, that lighting at the site has to be downlighting?
Uh, well, that, that's certainly part of it, is it's downlighting as well as the frequencies. Generally, you, th- these lights have more of an orange tint in their frequency spectrum, which is more pleasing. Uh, so it's, it's, and it's, it's lower wattage, it's, it's less light. And, uh, most studies have shown that the light put out by these low light levels are still adequate for safety purposes. So you don't have to have this really bright parking lot s- sitting out there. Uh, when we moved to the country, uh, we owned some property around us, and there was a, our house and the house across the road. And we removed all of the yard lights. So we have a relatively dark backyard. We still have enough low-level lights where you walk at night sometimes. But, uh, uh, you, you, you just need to not only aim the light, but you have the right, need to have the right spectrum, which is more pleasing to the eye.
Where, do, based on what you, do you have any suggestions for us?
Uh, I think, uh, whoever your, your technical people are and need to become more familiar with these kind of articles about the light pollution and how you can alleviate that. And again, I realize this is just one location out in, in Kingsborough. But you need to learn to start doing it right.
Well, I, and I-
And maybe have an, be an example of how it can be done by other people.
And I don't think this board would disagree with you, uh, we might some, need some help in what right is. Okay, okay, in terms of, you seem to bring quite an experience here, so I'm asking you now, based on what we got on the table, do you have any thoughts in terms of, we're gonna look at whether we're gonna prove this or not? And once we approve it, unless we come back and, right now, the way the laws are, we can't come back and strengthen it.
Correct.
If there's anything that we're gonna strengthen now, we need to do it now.
Well, I, I can't just go tough on my head, give you a really good statement, but, but I think you do need to have a statement in there about light pollution at night.
Could, could I speak to that for a moment, Mr. Chairman?
Please speak to him.
Uh, and that's a great point, and that was brought up on Thursday night. Uh, we do have in our ordinance, um, this does not specifically show up in here, but it does apply here.
Okay.
We have, uh, lighting standards that try to reduce as much as possible light pollution. I know some of it speaks to the direction of the lighting, directional lighting. I don't know what else is in there, but certainly, um, we'll look at that, and if, if we can strengthen that in any way, um, we will take a look at that. Again, we do have, uh, standards in our U D O that would apply here, it's just not spoken in this section because it's not something that we're changing.
I'd, I'd be happy to have further conversations with you or anybody else.
Absolute.
And so we would press that, uh, the servants, that I hope that nobody could reach out as related to it. If in fact, that a hundred percent improve, I'm certain of it. Excepting the thing we bring to you back, I'm certain we wouldn't look at.
Yeah, I'd be happy to help if I can.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask him a question while you're here? I certainly want to tap into your expertise while you're here. As you know, um, as Mr. Spell covered, we have standards in here regarding, uh, noise pollution, limits for noise to be measured, uh, at the property line, depending on whether or not there is a, uh, residential structure either existing or planned next to it. Um, so that's measured at the light line. We do not, as you probably have seen, we do not specify based on particular frequency, just noise in general. I guess my question is, uh, being that we have a limit, uh, does that, would that cover regardless of the frequency?
Uh, I'm not sure how the current regulations are stated, frankly. I, I know there is a standard way of measuring noise, but you can measure noise based on how your ear would normally respond to frequencies. But when you talk about low frequencies, sometimes it's not just hearing, it's feeling. I mean, you, if you've ever been to a rock concert, it's those bass notes that really get to you.
That's right. You feel it as much as you hear.
Yeah, of course, those are much higher noise levels. But, uh, you know, i- if I were near a source of, and we aren't, we, we're pretty quiet out where we are. But if I were, well, let, let me give an example. Uh, every time a train comes through Battleboro, uh, I, that's very noisy there locally, and there's not much you can know about that. But the frequency I, I hear are the low frequencies. I mean, you can actually feel and, and hear those frequencies. And, and if, if there's some way of coming up with a clever way of stable limits at certain frequencies, that'd be great. I'm just not sure that standard exists.
I would also, Mr. Chairman, mention that, uh, when, uh, our team, when we reviewed the recommendations, uh, for this tax amendment, we also looked in other places in the ordinance that speak of noise limits. And it shows up three or four times in other places, farming operations of, a few other, can't remember right offhand. At least three of those others speak of a limit of seventy decibels. Um, and so, you know, if we were to be consistent with other areas of the, the, uh, ordinance, we would likely recommend seven, as you know, we started with seventy-five. But I think in light of certainly the, the planning board's recommendation, the concern about that, I think it was wise that we, um, bring this recommendation to you at sixty, uh, sixty decibels at the, um, at the light line. Uh, also, uh, Mr. Cav, you asked about who would enforce it. So our, our zoning and development ordinance are enforced by our planning department as they are for any other use. Um, you know, for example, if you had a area that's zoned AR thirty and somebody decided to, you know, pop up a dance hall in the middle of the night, that would be a zoning violation that would be enforced by our planning department through multiple steps. It would be no different than that. If there's in some way, something that was done, um, on this site that would be outside, first of all, if it's initially outside of the development standards and the youth permitted uses for this zone, it would not get, uh, permitted. And secondly, if during the course of the use of the property, if it does anything that falls outside of the permitted, permitted uses for the, for that zone or, and/or any of the development standards, um, it would come under a zoning violation and handled that way.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, you mentioned sixty D V. Sixty D V is about normal conversation of a level. Uh, but at night, when you're trying to sleep, would you like to be trying to sleep with somebody talking with you at sixty D V level? Probably not. And, and fifty D V is, would be much better at night.
And I think it's fifty if there's residence, if there's a residence adjoining properties, fifty at night.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments of questions? Thank you.
Robert and Mary Coggins?
No, no comment.
Jean Nash?
I'm Jean Nash, uh, live in Tarboro. I am a retired high school science teacher, farmer's daughter, who actually grew up working on the farm. And I'm a safety manager at the company, at a company on Anaconda Road that is one mile from the proposed Tarboro data center site. Um, so I just felt like it was important to voice some concerns. I don't have expertise to offer like Robert does. But, um, we have not one, but three proposed data centers. And so we don't, I don't feel like we know all the risks. And I understand the tax benefits. I understand, you know, that there are lots of benefits, but I think there are a lot of risks. And I appreciate everything that our county is doing to try to mitigate those risks. And I appreciate all these, you know, the amendments that are, um, being added. Um, but I feel like maybe we're going kind of quickly. Um, I was at the Tarboro meeting, and I felt like some of the questions weren't answered the way that the majority of the people in the room felt they should have been answered by the company representatives. Um, I wondered if we couldn't slow it down. And I don't know how that process works. Y'all may have to do what you have to do tonight. But I just felt like, as a science teacher, I always taught the scientific method. And if you have a problem, and I always told them to state it as a question, is a data center good for Edgecombe County? That's your problem, and then you form your hypothesis. You know, yes, it is, or no, it isn't. But then you do a whole lot of background research, that's the next step. And I think that you all have, and I appreciate that. But I don't know that we all know all that's been done. And I just feel like they vary wildly, from what I can gather. I feel like there's a whole lot of things we could learn if we could go to some of the data centers. Um, I know Virginia has the big, um, data center alley they talk about. Um, and I know that they all vary greatly, I think. And, and height was one question I had, since it wasn't addressed in the amendments. I did read, and I don't know where it is, but I read that there was, that there are some particularly tall ones, like ninety feet. And so I didn't know, maybe that was something we should try to look at adding. And so I didn't know if maybe that was something we should try to look at adding to these amendments, um. I understand, um. That things were handled, had to be handled differently in Tarboro. I understand how that works. Um, but I wondered if we couldn't slow down and try to learn a little bit more. Uh, my biggest concern is water. Um. We're in Ag County. I grew up, you know, farming and. Um, we can talk about whether the water comes from Tarboro or Rocky Mount. But it's all. The same water. Um. God gave us the river. That's what we have, and somebody might can. Handle it better than another town, but it's all coming from the same place. And the bottom line is that farmers use that water to irrigate, and other companies have to use. That water. We all use that water, and we're in a severe drought now, and. You know, our leaders tell us that we have plenty of water. The water's not an issue, but. We don't know what it's going to look like in five years, not if the right things are going. We don't know what it's going to look like in ten years. Um. So I just am here because I like to be cautious about things. Um, and again, I didn't feel like the questions were answered for us by the company in the Tarboro meeting. Um. Just one example was they talked about the graphene batteries, but when you Google the graphene batteries that they're going to use, the infrastructure's not there. So we wondered how you can get those if the infrastructure's not there. So I think we're being given a lot of things that sound really good, but I don't know. That. They're all plausible. Um. So I think three's a lot, and. What happens after three? Have we opened our doors, or can we do a moratorium on them after that, if that's what happens? Um. And again, I think. I think that's all I really have to say. It's just I wanted to voice my concerns. I felt like it was important, and I didn't know of anybody else. He, I was behind the eight ball, I guess. I was behind the ball because of. Going to the Tarboro meeting and stuff, and then this kind of happened quickly. Um. I think that's. All I have to say, and I appreciate it to tell.
Any questions?
Thanks.
Thank you so much. See anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none.
I'll say something.
Are you, uh, you know, you. You weren't trying to. Hearing none at this time, right, the time. The public hearing. The panel boy has made a recommendation that. We're proving this motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if if it'd be okay, if Durbin, Durbin wouldn't mind coming back. To just recap the additional changes that staff has recommended since the planning board's recommended.
That's since the public, since we got the public, that was since the first night.
Uh, before then, yes, sir.
Yeah, so the additional recommendations that staff had, um, I'll go back over. Them. Uh, regarding the, um, notification for the neighborhood meeting. Um, staff, uh, makes a recommendation that language be added. That applicants will have to forward the additional rezoning or plan development process. Will have also have to advertise in the newspaper. Uh, minimum of ten days prior to the neighborhood meeting. So that's the first one. So the second one regarding, um. Daylight hours for the, uh, noise levels. Uh, as we probably discussed, um, for projects. That borders, um, properties that have existing or proposed dwellings. That, um, you have limits of sixty D B As during the day and fifty during the night. And staff recommends add a language, and which that, uh. Specifies the daylight hours run run from seven A M. to six P M. And then, uh, the final recommendation regarding utility usage, um, staff recommend added. Language that makes clear that the, um. Attestations are not only due when the applicant. Uh, obtains the initial bill to permit, but also as part of the annual zoning permit process.
Also need to be added, um, for the public information is that. We are amending. This is an app, this is a. Proposal to amend our orders to make. Data centers could not be you put in this county at all because we didn't have it in our orders. But this is a motion to, this is an. An action that will add it to our unified development orders. And 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 we only have one area in the county that. That will be in use by right, please state.
Two.
Two, correct.
There too. The primary is Kingsburg. As the map Durbin showed earlier, there's another area, I think it's about three hundred acres. Um. We'll show it there on the map again. Area just northwest of Kingsburg, some miles there, that's zoned M two as well. So this, if you adopt these, uh, this, these changes tonight to our ordinance. It will allow for, um, data centers. In those two areas of M two zoning, as long as they meet those development standards about noise setback. And those other things that we've discussed tonight. If anyone would want to build a data center outside of M two, they would have to go through the rezoning process. Which that requires ultimately before planning board and then. A public hearing here, but also they will be required to have a neighborhood meeting. And they would have to advertise that meeting, uh, in local respite.
And in addition to the mail out, mail out notice, because they would have to also mail out notice. Um, a radius of five hundred feet within the affected property. Also.
Yes, sir. Uh. Staff has made those recommendations. I know that we addressed light in other areas of our U D O. I think it would be appropriate for us to address it specifically here in this zoning as well.
Okay.
And would like that, like that down lighting be. Approved, and then we can look at further lighting in other areas of our U D O as we kind of see, but. As we know, that document is a very large document and a living document and can change quickly, um, as you know as well. Um, and I think it would be appropriate for us to identify that in in our M two specifically.
Let's, um. That's a good point, and and Durbin, you're still back there. But let's, let's look at it and see where it might be the most appropriate place in this section to reference. Those, um, lighting standards.
I think what I'm hearing. The gods wherever it's where other places located. We want to locate, ensure it's downlight. For this particular site.
That that's right, and we're just trying to determine. Um, so that we can be specific and everyone is clear about what will be adopted tonight. Uh, where's the best place?
If it is adopted.
Yes, if it is adopted, that's correct.
And and there's a couple of ways we can do this. One, we could put a referent. Um, saying that lighting would need to meet section, I mean, six point. Whoever nine. In the ordinance, and they would have to reference that ordinance. With that section to ensure that the lighting meets the standard, the legal standard.
Gotcha.
Well, part of my hesitation with that is what happens if that section changes, and so. I think the concern from the citizens is in this M two district specifically, particularly for these data centers or for other heavy industrial. That we have that might go in. Is if that section changes for the entire county, does that change the M two district at that point?
It does, if it's referenced, yes, sir. So whatever becomes of that section that has the lighting standards. As that might have changed, it will automatically apply to anywhere else, not just here, but anywhere else that is referenced to.
Right. Would you agree?
Yeah, yes, sir. But I think that's his concern.
That is my concern, is that that might change for the entire county.
Oh, oh, yes.
Can our heavy industrial district be zoned so that we say it has to be downlight?
Gotcha.
Well, would it be glad to have downlight in the rest of the county?
I think that's the standard, from my understanding, is that it, that we do try and address light pollution. But I think we should go one step further. If we're talking about a universal change here, we're putting sound ordinances that are above and beyond. Why can't we put lighting ordinance that are above and beyond as well?
I I just think you need to be careful and make sure that we do something that there is a possibility that. That industry can meet too. Okay, we don't want. To restrict ourselves out. And so, we do want to make sure that it, 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 the refill the citizens take care of it.
I understand. I think lighting, I think downlighting is kind of the standard. I I I do think it's kind of a standard when you're do talking about industrial development. I think most, most developers, I'm not speaking for them, would would kind of agree to that standard.
Yes, that's his own terms of mind.
Well, I think, to your point, Mr. Chairman, that's already the standard. So this wouldn't be increasing the standard for development of the data center. This would just be, I think, Mr. Paul, saying, clarifying. That notwithstanding what may change elsewhere in this M two. Or in this data center use, this will be a requirement.
And, um. And six point three point six B, it does discuss. Um, shielding, uh, and does talk about overhead lighting fixtures shall be designed to prevent. Light from emitting upwards towards the sky. So that's in six point three point six B one.
I still didn't get it. I still haven't.
I think my recommend at this time. Would be to include our current standard for lighting, that it be down facing light. As that, as I, as I interpret that, that it means it is down facing light, and then we continue to 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 address that.
I think you mean, if I may, include the language from that standard, not just merely by reference.
Correct.
That way, if the over six point three changes, that language will still be included in the data center use.
I understand discussion.
That's right.
How do we put that?
Well. Pardon, Mr. Phil, I assume that we could, you know, copy that language from. Six point three two and just paste that into the, yeah, data center use amendment.
Because it talks about general standards, shielding. Uh, fixture height, lamp height, mounting location, appearance, and glare. So we just take all of those standards and apply that specifically to.
I feel like that's more powerful than references to.
Sure.
Um, we have a standard in place now, and it ensures that that district's there, whether that standard changes or not.
You have a comment or some questions on proposed changes? Chairman, it's a motion to Edgecombe County, Edgecombe. Kind of what a commission proves that the application as presented. Is consistent with Edgecombe's cows adopted.
I believe that's for the next public.
Is that what? I'm reading the wrong one?
No, no, that was a consistency statement, Bill. With this, with this U D O test amendment.
I I'm calling that.
Am I right? The Edgecombe County. What a commission proves that the application as presented is consistent with the Edgecombe cows adopted. Policy guys as expressed. In the. Two thousand. Whatever, twenty five?
Well, two thousand fourteen to two thousand thirty-four.
Plan based on the following reason. Is consistent. Economic development policy number one, economic development goals. The application, the Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners. Include that the application as presented is reasonable, that it can probably enter based on the following reason. And has economic potential of Edgecombe County. Is there a second to that motion?
Is this including, continuing to include the adoption of the proposed amendments? Is this only making two separate motions, or is this one? It sounds like a consistency statement.
Well, it sounds like what you're doing is approving the text amendment as presented with the additional changes.
Proposed changes.
And noting that it is, um. Adopted by these policy guide. And please, sir. If.
That would be language. Now help me so that the public will understand what we're getting ready to do.
As I understand it, your notion, Mr. Chairman, was to adopt the proposed text amendments to the U D O. Including the staff changes discussed tonight regarding the lighting. And the consistency statement that you just read.
That's correct. Is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing no second? Motion dies. Our actual view of this.
We can proceed. Next one.
Thank you, public hearing. Uh, that means that amendment. That means I've said amendment. To your, usually only the gentleman.
Could I make a subsequent motion? I'd like to make a subsequent motion that we table this. Or send it back to planning board. I'm I'm not sure. On that, on that specific language to discuss lighting in particular. And maybe have a community meeting with the proposed site that is purpose made of that. Like, we're, we're asking the future sites to have a community meeting for conditional zoning. Does this company specifically have a community meeting? As opposed, as a, as a proposal to that? And also lighting height. I think those are two concerns that we've, we've had. I think we've addressed to the public light, the sound. I think we've, I think. Staff has done a phenomenal job on addressing sound and really trying to hone in on what sound is. I don't know if we've addressed light. That is a common question in height, um. I I don't know if that necessarily needs to go back to the planning board, or if that's a community meeting with the partner that's already in in place.
I think go back to the plan, plan role, and the proposed changes that they might send back to us.
I guess my, my subsequent motion would be that we, we send this back to the planning board to discuss those additional considerations.
Second?
Thank you.
Questions? They were having a little time. I, opposed. Hearing none, and this is referred back to the panel board, ladies and gentlemen, for further consideration. Public interest is discussed conditional rezoning. Case, uh, twenty five S C R D O five. The public hearing is called to order. Please read the public notice. Mr. Peters?
Yes, sir.
I'll ask anyone standing behind the seat, available seat, if you can keep watching, I won't be here. Public notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Commissioners of Edgecombe County. On Monday, October sixth, twenty twenty five, six o'clock P M. And the Jonathan Felton Commissioner, on the second floor. County administrative building, two oh one Saint Andrew Street, Tarboro, North Carolina, to consider and act upon case twenty five dash R Z F five. They request to resume a parcel owned by Robert Coggins the third. Mary Coggins, located at four three oh three N C forty three North. On top, it's also identified as parcel number three seven nine. Five seven three four seven one four zero zero. The applicant, Robert Coggins the third, requests to rezone property from B one Life Business District to A R thirty Rural Residential District. Copies of the proposed zoning map amendment are available for public inspection during business hours, eight A M. to five P M. In the county planning office during two oh five, county administrative building, two oh one Saint Andrew Street, Tarboro, North Carolina. All parties in interest and all interested residents are invited and urged to be present and make their views known. This is the twenty fourth day of September, twenty twenty five, by all of the Board of Commissioners of Edgecombe County. Amy Faiz, the court to the board.
Sirs.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call it Mr. Durbin Spell again and give us, uh, overview of this. And, uh, rezoning request.
Thank you. Mr. Robert Coggins the third, this is western rezoning from a one point two eight acre parcel from. Um, Life Business B one to Rural Residential A R thirty. And that's a. Map of the, uh, property, um. And then processor completing the subdivision after, um, get the, uh, D recorder. So Light Business District is a tenant for low intensity neighborhood serving commercial and mixed use development. Around significant roadway intersections located along edges of neighborhoods. Um, the agricultural. A R thirty Rural Residential. Uh, the purpose of that is to, uh, permit for. Um, low density residential development. As you see, see overview of the property, um. Of the property prior to it being, um, certified. Uh, the future, uh, land use map recommends, um, the par, the parcel to be of a rural residential, um, designation. And that's the current zoning map showing the parcel. Being of a B one district. And as you see, you see, um, current dwelling as well as a business. And the, um, applicant wanted to satisfy the dwelling from that business. And that's the reason why he's seeking the rezoning. After conclusion of the August eighteenth meeting, the planning board recommended approval of the rezoning application citing, um, in the statement of consistency that the rezoning would be consistent with the twenty fourteen, twenty thirty four Hecum County Confidence of Land Use Plan Policy Number One Use of Plan. Therefore, and therefore deny your decisions, have you one following approval of the application, denial of the application, approval of a, of a valid application, or remain the application back for further consideration. And I have Mr. Coggins here. He is, um, be able to come by and present his case. Just Coggins.
Good evening. My name is Robert Coggins. Of course, I live in Greenville, uh, five one eight six County Home Road. Um, my request was just to, uh, sell the piece of property to the gentleman that previously owned it. Uh, back in the O eight, he was able to, wasn't able to sustain all the money that he needed. And my wife and I helped him out. So what we're doing now is selling him back the, uh, amount that he actually paid for it at that time. We're just trying to be good neighbors and help him out when people come in and have hard times. So, uh, I'd like y'all to look at that and think about that and see if we can get it changed over to, to residential. He has a loan in place now to purchase the, the double Y that's there now. So, uh, we can't, we can't purchase it unless it is rezoned to residential. But that's kind of where we're at. Thank you.
Does anybody else speak?
Yes, sir.
Here in non the public hearing, it's closed. I have what did make record is approve is a motion.
Second.
The motion is true. Approve the application of the motion made and second. I would like to have a little bit, I'm going to go to high.
Aye.
All opposed. Here in none. The motion is approved. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda, uh, is we have budget amendments?
Public petition.
Public petition?
Yes, sir.
Next, the public petition. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, uh, we will call from the list of those of you that have signed up for public petitions. Say something, please. You're three minutes, three minutes on that.
It will depend on whether we're presenting on, um, Mr. Manley or Mr. U.
We didn't require.
It's not a requirement, but they can come in whatever order that you want. Have them listed, okay?
Yes, sir. Ernest Taylor.
Good evening. County Commissioners, Chairperson, Mr. Wigan. County Manager. Hi, uh. My name is Ernest Taylor. I live at twelve oh one Sycamore Street, Rockhamouth. I had the privilege and opportunity some twenty years ago to stand in this position to support the first black county commissions in Hecum County. And that was Reverend J O Thorn. At that time, Reverend Thorn and Reverend Walker, we ran the two camps together. And we knew at that time that we want Hecum County to have a better school system and to grow. So when we decided for them to run, the first thing they did was commit themselves to the peoples in Hecum County while they would do for representing them. And I'm honored and I too, be able to speak on somebody that I know personally that who served on the, uh, social service board along with myself and he's served as chairperson for many, many years. He also is a retired police officer. And he's concerned about the growth of Hecum, Rockhamouth, and Hecum County. We're living in difficult times now. And I think you all have seen what's going on the T V and you've seen and you read it. And we know what's coming down the pipe. But other than that, even in Rockhamouth, we don't even have a bank in Hecum, Rockhamouth. We don't have a drug store in Hecum, Rockhamouth. And we got a lot of the little bling bling stores in Rockhamouth. And we're talking about our young kids, uh, messing with drugs. Uh, we need to find out what some of these places are selling to our kids. But we have the greatest opportunity now to get some people elected to the county commission board that will make a difference in our county and see that our town, county grows. And then we take care of our peoples and our children in the school system. Thank you.
Who's you telling?
I didn't tell you about Mr. Larry Wood.
Ain't that right?
Well, that's a precious name.
Michael Pittman?
Good evening. My name is Michael Pittman. I reside at four twenty one New Hope Trace Road in Valverde, also known as North Rockhamouth. I retired from, uh, United Forces Service in the city of Nippon New in the state of Virginia. But I'm homegrown, Hecum County, born and raised. And I'm here to speak on brother, friend, father, a man of integrity. And I'm speaking on knowing us, but Larry B. Woodley. He have done so much for the county, the city of Rockhamouth, the city of Woodikers. It's, it's too numerous to try to explain everything. But I was always taught that you don't follow people that you don't believe in. I believe in Larry. Why? Because he's been there with me. Y'all might see me walking with a cane. But there was times when Larry had to physically pick me up, take me to the doctor. And he's a family man. He's an honest man. And I believe that he will make a excellent county commission. Not going to waste your time. But from a spiritual standpoint, that's what I want to say. That old song say, may the work I've done speak for me. It may be the life I live. Don't two things alone speak volumes for Larry. And I'm going to rest my case right there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
But there are others. There are others.
So there are others. Without, without any objections, the board, um, we hear from them. Any objections? Here in none. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Please. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is Dr. Wallace, Chair of Mount Zion Baptist Baptist Church. I stay at two thirty seven West View Park Drive in Rockhamouth. I come here to talk about an individual who helped me through my life. When I was playing on the other field, he brought me to another field. I was doing wrong and life has its challenges. He took me up in his wing and he's a sharp graduate like I am. What direction he gave me, I went to biblical school, attained my masters, now I have my doctor. Talking about Larry Woodley. One of us been with me in my downtime, my uptown. Word replacement means to place something in position with somebody before. With this individual, you can rest assure that replacement will be guaranteed. I bless.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to be here today. Um, I'm here to speak on behalf of Larry Willy also. As, as a retired, my name is George Robinson, um, that's retired police chief of city of Rockhamouth. I worked for Larry as a, as a young sergeant. And he really, really believes in people. Um, when I was going through hard times, personal issues with my family, Larry Willy was one person you could pick up the phone and call and be there for you, even though he was dealing with his own stuff. And outside of that, he is a wonderful person, one that I honor. And I really think he'll make a great commissioner if given our opinion. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Tyree Woodley. I stay at seven zero nine Fairview Road in Rockhamouth, North Carolina, Hecum County. If you want a man of honor, integrity, values people, values himself and his family, vote my dad Larry Woodley.
So good evening. I didn't know, had to sign up normally coming in just speaking. Um, good evening. Thank you for allowing me.
Every time you speak, you always gotta sign up.
Oh, yeah.
Your session staff.
Oh, I didn't know that. I, I missed about two meetings. I never signed up. I have quick comments.
You didn't care.
Right. I earned that right, I guess. All right. Good evening. Um, my name is Camus Dance, the second. Um, one two seven Midway Lane, Tarver, physical address, mailing address is P O box thirteen nine one Pine Top. Three miles out of Pine Top, seven miles out of Tarver, I love to say that. Um, thank you for allowing me to continue. Thank you for allowing me to continue to serve as one of the first animal welfare advisory council members. I can't wait for the opening of the new animal shelter, um, myself and Kathy, but she's the chair. Uh, we were one of the first two, um, members.
I thought we were speaking about.
I, I am. I'm gonna get it. Oh, oh, okay. I thought just I won't comment. Okay, that's what I thought. I know I'm getting old, but I, I watched the interview held in, well, let me go back. I stand to support Larry Willy to be appointed to serve the on its five chairman of Reverend Wayne Hines. I watched the interview held in this room. Will be served for several years as chair of the Department of Health and Human Services. He already has a relationship with the commission and the employees. Thank you in advance.
Does anybody else speak?
I was.
Please come, please come forward.
Good evening, Commission. I'm Deborah Jordan. I live at six fourteen East Wilson Street in Tarver. And this is just general coming. I have a question about the hours of operation for the waste landfill. Um, it's been cut on Wednesday through half a day and no on Saturdays. So.
Can you handle that, Mr. Smith?
Sure.
I didn't know it was cut.
I did. I did. And I believe it's just one Wednesday a month.
Last Wednesday.
The last Wednesday of month, we close at twelve. See, people know if I don't know. And they do that so that they can do training with staff and might be certain things that they need catch up on that. But that's the last Wednesday of the month that we're closed. And the Saturday, that has been several years since.
I think it started twenty one, I believe. Twenty one, twenty two.
Okay. So my tax, I'll get a half a day on a Wednesday and no Saturday.
One Wednesday.
One Wednesday.
Just go those other three.
Well, you know, I'm a contractor's wife, so if he wants to go dump his stuff, he want to go dump it. So, okay. So that's what's, this is the third Wednesday, the last one, fourth Wednesday.
Fourth Wednesday.
Yes, it's, it's last Wednesday. The last. But convenience parks are still open. It's just landfill itself.
Okay. He's not the only one comes complaining either. But, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And this time, ladies and gentlemen, it's not just for anything you want to talk about candidates, but anything that you'd like to come forward to. Anybody else to speak? Anybody, is anybody on the, that's the end of this.
That's the end of this.
Here in none, at this time, and without any objections from the board, I think, after that, we might, I will move. I can be up. And that is a consideration of proving the temporary replacement for history. Seven, this is a temporary replacement commission. That means that if Reverend Hines decided to come back, that we should see until the expiration of the term. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Nomination for a candidate.
May, if, just to give good background for everybody, if I can read to this, the thing would be helpful. Uh, just as a reminder, at your August meeting, the board approved the leave of absence for permission of Wayne, uh, Wayne Hines, Reverend Wayne Hines, as you just stated, Mr. Chairman, due to health related, uh, reasons. In that same action, the board directed staff to move forward with the process of appointing a temporary replacement to serve dur- during the approved leave period. Uh, staff publicized the opportunity and solicited interests from eligible District Seven residents. Two individuals submitted their names for consideration, that being Mr. John Manley and Mr. Larry Woodley. Both candidates were verified as qualified residing in District Seven and are eligible to serve if appointed by the board. They were interviewed by the board's personnel committee and then given the opportunity to speak before the full board at your special meeting on September twenty second to introduce themselves, uh, share why they are interested in the seat and explain why they believe they are the best candidate to serve. Uh, at tonight's meeting, you may select the person to temporarily fill the District Seven seat. As a reminder, procedure would be, uh, any commissioner may make a motion to appoint a candidate which requires a second. Majority vote of the board members president, provided we have a quorum, and we do have a quorum, um, is required for an appointment. If no candidate receives a majority vote, the board may do one of three things. You may choose to leave the seat vacant. You may choose to table the matter for future consideration, or you may reopen the application process. Uh, you do have in your, uh, agenda packet, a summary of, uh, the responses from their interviews conducted by the personnel committee, um, uh, for your review. And certainly, if you have any questions, uh, Commissioner Harris is chairperson of that personnel committee, if you have any questions of the committee. Um, but, uh, just wanted to make sure everyone, we all sort of summarize what the process is and what you would do tonight.
Thank you for all that from the city. You do have the summary, um, based on, uh, the summary of the, of the background information. And Mr. Walker, is there a motion? Is there nominations for any of the candidates?
Mr. Chair, I nominate, um, Larry Woodley to fill the vacant seat district for District Seven, second.
Mr. Chairman, may I, we clarify just for the record, that is a motion to appoint.
Okay, motion to appoint Larry Woodley for the District Seven. Okay, motion to appoint Larry Woodley for the District Seven, uh, Second, that motion.
Any other nominations? Here none. Please let it be seen by a vote of hands to approve. Is it lawful to approve of Mr. Larry Woodley as the new Commissioner to fill the position of Reverend Wayne Hines? Uh, ladies and gentlemen, just like I say, uh, the board could not have gone wrong tonight. Okay, because I think we had two excellent candidates. I've known both of these men uh, ever since they've been in Rocky Mountain. And both have done an excellent job with their public service. Thank you, Chief Man, for your concern in it. Thank you. Mr. Woodley, thank all of you that have shown interest in this seat. I think either one of them would have served us very, very well. And I do look for, uh, Chief Man, to anywhere that I can help you continue to serve the people of this county. Thank you for, thank you. Uh, Mr. Woodley, you will be receiving, uh, probably, uh, a letter from, um, Mr. Evans, and I think the way we propose this, uh, you be prepared to be sworn that I will make no further reading, is that correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
You be prepared and take your seat at our no further reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions or comments from anybody in the public floor?
I'd just like to say congratulations, um. Like, Mr. Powell, we've both known Mr. Woodley for many, many years, but I did have the opportunity to serve with him on Human Services Board, Social Services Board for over the last twelve years. I know his concern for Edgecombe County. Um, so I'm proud to have him to be seated next to me on this board. I know that he will do all he can for all of Edgecombe County. Even though he's in Rocky Mountain, he has worked in lots, many parts of Edgecombe County. And of course, he came from the best high school in the county. North Edgecombe Secondary. Class nineteen-seventh.
I agree.
Here none. Thank everybody. There's about a like. I take a minute recess. We congratulate the county. Recession for about ten fifteen minutes.
On plan, Georgia. Got it, you go to the, to the, back to the land. Hello, these questions, did you get my phone call? I'm, I'm on holiday yesterday and I called. And it was Friday afternoon, you could not be away. I left a message, I watched. I left a message, I'm like a horse. No, I've, I've never heard otherwise.
Calling back all the ways.
I wanna, cause I think, um, your board know, well, uh, Mr. Way of coming to my day. Last Saturday, I mean, last Saturday.
You just.
You got it.
You heard it, you heard it.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll get it.
Pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, you have four that require your approval. Uh, the first one is, uh, we'll be moving some funds in the Health Department from salary line to the contract line. This is for contract services for, uh, with nutrition plus being that we don't have a staff person in that position at this time. Um, budget amendment number two is appropriating insurance claims received, uh, in the Sheriff's Office. Uh, budget amendment number three. This is regarding the, uh, financing. We recently closed on to properly appropriate that in both our revenue and the related, uh, expenditure lines. Budget amendment number four is to appropriate, uh, Governor's Highway Safety Grant Funds received in the Sheriff's Office. Others are for your information, but happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Motion?
Someone.
Second.
Second.
Questions?
Just a comment, and I, I know we've talked about it many times, but budget amendment number three, with that loan proceeds and really investing in upgrading our facilities, I, I'm proud of that. Um, our facilities are aging and, and that's what we need to take a lot of pride in. So, uh, as we learned today in a text message that we, we've lost an elevator. Um, and so i- it is a matter of, of less investing back and, and being proud of the buildings that we do have. I think it shows a lot to our citizens. Um, when, when we ask them to do upgrades and to do these things to their, to their properties, we also need to be investing ourselves.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. And you know, uh, I've spoken about this to staff before, that not only do we have all of these facilities that, uh, we need to keep up for us to function in and serve our, our citizens, but also many of our buildings are icons where they're located, courthouse, this building and others. So it's important for us to be good stewards of those buildings. So thank you, sir.
All in favor, there be nobody votes in aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here is none. It is approved. Consideration called a public hearing regarding change to the animal service. I understand motion to approve calling the public hearing?
Motion.
Thank you.
Questions? All in favor, there be nobody votes in aye. That's putting over my meeting?
Aye.
All opposed? Here none, it is approved. Uh, considered, consideration to approve off the purchase of county-owned property option agreement, Mr. Harris?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, related, this county-owned property related to a data center project that we've discussed now, uh, regarding, uh, or, or at Kingsborough Business Park. This would be property that's, uh, located right behind what used to be the QDC facility and the parcel next to it, a total of about a hundred and twenty-two acres. Um, Go For Solar LLC had made an offer to purchase. It was advertised for upset bid, no upset bids were received. They also were offering, uh, they had also, uh, purchased an option on the, uh, one hundred acres. Um, in speaking in the, the break that we had just a moment ago, principals of the company, considering that the rezoning or considering that the text amendment was not approved, have asked us if we would table this, uh, until future consideration.
Motion to table.
Second.
Staff, have any other comments on it?
No, sir. I, 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 I think that would be the, the easiest path. It would be quite complicated if we tried to. What is presented to you tonight, the draft purchase agreement contemplates that they would move forward with this immediately.
And also, Mr. Chairman, the offer was contingent on, uh, appropriations of a big tended use.
All in favor, there be nobody votes in aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Post passage, no offense. Next, go ahead, Mr. Harris.
Um, this is regarding our capital funds, um, ordinance. Um, we're proposing to revise our major capital project ordinance, IFC twenty-twenty-six, to reflect the full budget, uh, full project budget of one million, one hundred seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Revenues are updated to show twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars that are advanced from the general fund from last fiscal year, and also adding one million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, seventy dollars from the, uh, limited obligation bonds or the, the financing we recently closed on. Um, adding that to this ordinance. Uh, expenditures are appropriated one million, one seventy-four, eight hundred and fifty. Now, so as a note, as you know, we borrowed a total of five million dollars. A number of these projects we will be able to do in this fiscal year, so they were budgeted in Fund Ten with that budget amendment you just saw a moment ago. Uh, this would be for projects that likely will have to cross over into next fiscal year. Um, and so Ms. Barfield has, um, presented the, um, amended major capital projects fund ordinance recommended you approve.
Motion?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, there be nobody votes in aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Here none. Shit, Thomas. Next?
Next is regarding the Capital Reserve Project Ordinance. The School Capital Reserve Project Ordinance has been updated to reflect the revised FY twenty-six sales tax revenue projections from Articles forty and forty-two. These amounts are estimated based on the current year budget. The ordinance remains unchanged, uh, except for updating the amounts based on these budget, uh, estimates. As you know, um, a percentage of Article forty and forty-two sales tax, we're required to spend those, uh, in school-related capital projects, uh, if it is not spent in fiscal year. Uh, or first of all, they are transferred to this school capital project or school capital fund. Um, if it's not used in that given year, will continue to accumulate in that fund. Uh, as you'll note there in the revised ordinance proposed for you, this would take the total amount available in this, uh, school capital fund to a little over two point seven, uh, million dollars. Um, I do recommend that you approve as presented.
Motion?
No move.
Second.
Second.
Questions?
Question. Are we able to use this, these funds or portion of these funds towards the North Edgecombe Building Project?
We will use it for debt service, yes, sir. So the way that we do school-related debt service, we pay for it out of, uh, forty and forty-two sales tax, and then the remainder is appropriated for school use.
So, apart, so we still have to take out, we would still have to pay our county match. It couldn't be, these funds couldn't be used as part of the county match.
Could, but I think you, we'd need to have some discussion with the school system, because as you know.
That's an ongoing discussion, just, just a question.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All in favor, there be nobody votes in aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Here none, it is approved.
Mr. Chairman, then, if we, item G is the item that, um, you, uh, agreed to add to the agenda. This is regarding the Edgecombe Community College Budget Request Acknowledgement. Um, you have there in front of you fiscal year FY twenty-five, twenty-six budget for Edgecombe Community College. The Board of Trustees has approved the budget, and now you must acknowledge their total budget and confirm our appropriation of two million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars for the current fiscal year. And we say acknowledge it because it was already approved in, uh, the budget when you originally approved FY twenty-six budget. You'll see the breakdown, uh, for the funds that totaled two million, two fifty-two, four, two forty-nine. And, um, I, I do need to note, well, she's out of the room now, but Ms. Commissioner Harris needs to be excused from voting on this, being that she is an employee of Edgecombe Community College.
We should excuse her. Second.
Secondly.
Question?
Yes, I serve on Edgecombe Community College Foundation, so should I do it, say? I don't.
Yes, we would excuse both of them. This call, we would excuse, we would have motion to approve, Mr. Ware.
Yes.
Yes.
Can I motion, Mr. Ware?
Exactly.
Questions? All in favor, there be nobody votes in aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Ms. Harris, Mr. Ware are excused. All in favor, there be nobody votes in aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Here none, it is approved, with the exception of Mr. Ware and Ms. Harris. Next appointment, so we, appointments, real appointment, jury commissioners, Mr. Thompson. Government advisor board. Supporters, Shane Burnell, reappointments. Tara Wilson Williamson, new appointment, animal welfare advisors, councilor, sorry, sorry, McBride, new appointment, there are motion to approve. Second, questions? All in favor, there'd be nobody votes on aye.
Aye.
All opposed, here are none, they are approved. After list, have releases for the bill approval, anything you brought to our attention?
No, sir, happy to answer any questions, but just please know that there is an action item there, this agenda, part of the agenda as well.
We use the approval anyway, is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve it? That they approved the resolution to designate map review officer.
Well, first we need you to approve the afterlist and releases.
Do you know if we don't approve all of it, we need to.
Separately, yes.
Oh, too separate. Is there a motion to approve the afterlist and releases for.
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, there'd be nobody votes on aye.
Aye.
All opposed, here are none, it is approved.
Then for the designated map review officer, the change is Ms. Trinity Brown, who's relatively new team member in planning, is being added to the list of approved map reviewers. Recommend that you approve.
Motion.
Don't move.
Second. Question. All in favor, there'd be nobody votes on aye.
Aye.
All opposed, here are none, she is approved. Contract sure, no approval, Ms. Evans, anything you brought to our attention?
You'll see there are listed those that require your approval and those are for your information. Also, we'll note that there are five of those that include you approving sole source vendor, there is justification included for those. I do want to mention, you'll see we have a lot tonight. Many of those are related to the financing we just, we just talked about. There are a number of projects that have gone through the process. We selected those to be included in the list of projects we do with this, with the borrowing proceeds. And I want to acknowledge Mr. Stan Liverman, who is our maintenance director, who I believe is still in the room there in the back. Certainly have any questions about any of the project, he can answer your question. But I want to recognize, it takes quite a bit of work to get these projects from thought to a piece of paper, all the way to bidding, seeing what the prices are. And now he's, he's got the fun job of overseeing all of these. So thank him and his team, thank him and how he's worked with Ms. Barfield in preparing for this, this borrowing is quite an undertaking. I just want to take this opportunity to recognize his, his great work for the county.
Any questions before I ask one?
Two questions.
Go ahead.
On the animal shelter project, at last I heard that we were under budget, are we still under budget for right now?
That baby does sound like we're going.
But they're getting close to finished too, so. It's in a foot race, so.
Okay. We see these changes and everything, so I like some context on what does that mean on the overall project. We see numbers all the time, it's hard to kind of track where that project is in that. And then the second one is on temp staffing, there's several items here on temp staffing, wouldn't those have to come through budget amendments or?
So we have in Department of Social Service, they have funds in their contract services and I think we did recently approve moving some funds.
I think we have one that will be presented in the November, June.
Gotcha. And so we have some funds already budgeted there, we'll likely do a budget amendment. We use temp staffing a lot in DSS to help out with those vacant positions that we have. And Ms. Battle just went through a RFP process and vetted, got a lot of responses and these are the three that we are recommending for approval.
So the process on that is that before they become, before it comes as a budget amendment, we approve the contracts for the temp services?
There's currently enough sufficient in there to cover these contracts.
So what's the? I guess my question is, what's the budget? So we're going to have more coming at the next, so we're going to be asking for more temp service?
If, if these contracts increase, yes, sir.
That, that confuses my question. So we, we're, you're saying that there's enough budgeted here to pay for these contracts, but then you're saying we have to have a budget amendment to pay for these contracts.
He's a hell of a mistake.
Commissioner Thorne, I think what we're saying is we have enough moving through the month of October with what's in the budget to pay for the contracts. However, there was a budget amendment received too late to get on this agenda because we had to cut it off. And in speaking with the staff at DSS, we all felt like there was capacity within the budget to pay what we needed to pay and that we would bring the additional back to you in November. So if for some reason you decided that you would not approve the addition in November, then we would have to go back and just amend those contracts.
I just haven't seen these contracts come through this way. They usually come through as budget amendments, I haven't seen them come through this way, so that was my question. Usually it's moving salary line to temp line or temp line to salary line, which is good. And so I've not seen it come through as this request before, so that's.
Yeah, we've had a standing contract for some time for these temporary service firms or these temporary service. We're just now, as I mentioned, Ms. Battle went back and, and solicited proposals and that's why you're seeing these contracts now.
Is it motion approved?
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Question, but you, what's your sound? All in favor, there'd be nobody votes on aye.
Aye.
All opposed, here are none, they are approved. You, you have that, Ms. Harris. Go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Evans.
Under the department reports, you have the water and sewer department utilities update. Also have the solid waste monthly report. I'd like to call Ms. Barfield back to the podium to review your monthly financial report.
Oh, good evening. So just a couple of things I want to point out, I'll try not to take a lot of time, but do like to use this opportunity to fill you in on what those numbers mean that you see each month. The sales tax, of course, for July sales will be received this month in October, so they are not included on this month's report. Property tax, of course, is really in the beginning stages as well. And since those are processed on a separate system from our main financial software, the September 30th activity is also not posted in the report that you're looking at. But these are just timing differences that are typical for the first quarter and you will see those reflected in the year to date column in your next month report. Expenses are running about 18% of the budget, which is right where we would expect to be ending out the first quarter. With the federal shutdown now in effect, we've been monitoring all of our federally funded programs and grants to determine what impacts they might have on services. One of our immediate concern is the aging services that we receive from the Home and Community Care Block grant. As you probably know, that these funds run through the Upper Coastal Plain Council of Governments and are filtered down to us. The word that we got was that the state has advised that it will not front the federal portions of the funds during the shutdown for these funds and that the state is not likely to give its share either while the federal portion is frozen. Therefore, the Upper Coastal Plain Council of Governments put out a memo to all of the providers, including our Edgecombe County providers, informing them that they'd have to make a decision on whether to pause services until these reimbursements resume or whether or not they wanted to continue and wait on reimbursement. Now, these services are in-home aid, congregate meals and transportations. So critical services that older adults need to live in their own homes and their own communities. As of today, we have not heard of any providers that have actually paused their operations, but as the shutdown continues, that still would, would remain in effect. And again, just as a recap, this funding is all federal, state and local 10% on the provider. They flow through the county from us, from the state, from the fed states, the region down to us, and then we ultimately pay the providers. So the concern would be that with the state and the federal not having a reimbursement, the county would not likely be in a position to upfront that funds as well.
Do we know how much that would be?
So right now for the total services, we get about a half a million dollars for these services that are allocated through different providers. They're all given access to about one twelfth of a month. So I guess the final determination will depend on how long the shutdown continues.
How many agencies have we covered?
We've got about three, well, we've got actually two in-home aid agencies, a transportation agency, and we've got two congregate, or one congregate provider, and I think two home delivered providers. So I want to say anywhere from eight to 10. And I think on the last, and don't quote me, but if I remember correctly, on the last county funding plan, it was about 475 people estimated receiving these services in Edgecombe County.
Meal service is a, is a daily service.
Is a daily service, correct. And, and as I said, right now, no one has said that their decision was to cease operations. I imagine that some of them may have some reserves to continue for a period of time, but wanted to bring that to your attention because if the shutdown looms on or continues, there may be some hard decisions or we may see on a local level how that's affecting older adults within our, our community. And I will say that we did meet with the Home and Community Care Block Local Advisory Committee. And we did discuss these cuts and we're discussing other options. As you know, we're still continuing to do long-term planning. What we do know is what history has taught us is that government shutdowns are usually temporary. However, we did state that, given the current environment, that this could potentially last longer than, than we're normally expected. So I guess in short answer, it's a wait and see game and as the weeks go by, I'm sure we'll get more guidance from Upper Coastal Plain Council of Governments as well as hearing from the Division of Aging in terms of what they're recommending of, of how we should respond. The next thing is from the state shortfall, you know, you may have heard that the state's 3% Medicaid rate, which was effective October the first. I did want to bring to your attention that that could directly affect our EMS revenue, since many of our ambulance calls are billed to Medicaid. Colleton, who's our billing provider, has done an analysis and reviewed last year's calls. And what they're finding is that while the 3% cut, 3% cut were lower what were paid per call, more calls are now being billed under the prepaid health plan, which generally pays, pays at slightly higher rates. You may know that North Carolina recently shifted a lot of Medicaid patients over to these managed care PHVs and that change could offset part of the loss we'll see from that 3% reduction. However, the final impact will depend on this year's call volumes and the billing trends. But just wanted to just give you a heads up that those are things that we want to put on your radar early on because at this time, we're not exactly sure how that will affect us at year end when all is said is done. And, and hopefully the state has made some amendments. Then turning to the proprietary funds, solid waste revenues are about 14% of their annual budget, which again is typical for the first quarter. Their expenditures are about 17%. Did want to also remind you, I know I have in the past, but just to remind you, solid waste is also on a different system from our financial software. And because of that, their September activity is not reflected in this report in terms of the revenues collected. So in many cases, that would cause a lag in their revenues from, from their expenditures. However, just did want to remind you that we do have general fund money budgeted in that account for this upcoming year, a little over a million dollars. Don't have any official audited figures, but it looks like as of right now, as of the drafts that we're looking at and, and finishing up the audit, they've probably used about 800,000 of general fund money this year. So just, doesn't really mean anything at this point in terms of next year, but just giving you a heads up that, that fund may continue to, to need the general fund funding as we budgeted for. And that's all I have for the report.
Just one comment. When you look at, in, in the package, page 297, which sounds intimidating, but it's just the overall financial summary. In light of looking at these budgets, I, I think it's pertinent to announce that we, we do budget conservatively and that is kind of a, a worst case scenario number, correct? Because at this point, it's budgeted that we are in a deficit of 10, almost 11 million dollars, correct? That, that is assuming that we have to make every transfer out of the general fund, every.
Well, our current, our current fund balance projected this year that we projected the spend was 10.8. So it's not really at a deficit. Right now, I mean, if you were to look at it just strictly from that angle, it might be we were temporarily using fund balance because of the 7.4 deficit. But I, I will say this, to help put this all in perspective, we budget based on the requirements of the local government's Physical Control Act, which means every expenditure that we have is tied to an approved appropriation by, by this board. And with that, we also have pre-audits in place that ensure funds are available. We have a purchase order system and a financial system that will not let overrides on, on anything that does not have budget in. So in our case, it really is a lag between our major reimbursements like sales tax and, and property tax revenue. You don't see all of that posted yet to compare apples to apples. So in that case, ours really is a timing match, but we, our budget is designed so that we don't overspend and so are all the internal controls that we place on it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Barfield.
Under managers' report, you have there events and updates from the previous month, workforce development indicators, as well as the TDA financial reports for your review. Ms. Barfield has touched on it some, but just to add a little bit to regarding the federal and state budget situation. As you know, House Bill 1, also referred to as the big beautiful bill, has some impending changes that will affect us. The biggest of which will go into effect in December of 2026. And that being changes in eligibility and other requirements related to Medicaid and food and nutrition services. One of, that will impact our citizens who, who use those programs. Also, operationally for us, it is in that bill that it will cut the federal portion of the administration of the Food and Nutrition Service or Food Stamp Program, federal portion from 50% to 25%. Right now, we are reimbursed at a 50% rate for everything that our staff does related to processing intake or what have you of food stamps. They're going to reduce that to 25%. Well, the question is, will the state come in and fill that gap? And I think is, yeah, some early conversation, that might be, might not be a possibility. And if so, we've. we've we've looked at some numbers, and for us, you know, we're that that difference would be somewhere between four four hundred thousand and half a million dollars. So again, we've got a number of months for those those kind of things that we need to start thinking about and and preparing for. And Ms. Barfield mentioned about some of the impacts here locally of the federal shutdown. Also note, you may have seen the sign when you came in the front door, our friends down at USDA, Farm Service Administration, their offices are closed now due to the federal shutdown. And, you know, eventually, depending on how long it lasts, it could impact, you know, reimbursement of of grants that we either receive directly or indirectly from federal sources. And of course, as she just described, the impact to the Home and Community Care Block grant. So, you know, still some questions, you know, yet to be determined. I think it will depend on how long it lasts and also how if and what the state may do to to assist in some of these challenges. But certainly challenging times, staff will we will continue to monitor all of this. I know Ms. Ms. Battle, she and her team monitor it closely as it relates to impacts on social service. That's the largest department, largest number of people that we serve with potential impacts, current and future impact, also through our Health Department and other departments as well. Want to, a couple of other things not on the agenda, but I I will mention that as as you may be aware, Ms. Fason, who's a member of the Clerks Academy, she hosted the Regional Clerks Academy meeting and luncheon here in Tarboro last week, week before last.
Last Friday.
Last Friday, and I I had the honor of giving some welcome remarks. She did a fantastic job. Be very proud of her. And we received a a note of thanks from Maria Hess, who's with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, who thanked us for hosting their event here, but specifically recognizing Ms. Fason for her work on that on that event. And so we're grateful for that to be hosted here, first time here in the county. So thank her for for coordinating that. Also, you may be aware, I think we've discussed it before, but there's a flyer at your seat at at the recommendation of Chairman Wiggins. I think it's a great idea. We'll be having a county community meeting. We're calling it Our County in Your Community on Monday, October twenty-seventh from sixty-eight P M. It will be at the Edgecombe Community College Rocky Mountain Campus. The goal of it will be for us to have the opportunity to give some updates to citizens who attend, also to hopefully help them to learn more about the services that we provide and to listen to them, to get some feedback, to hear their feedback and concerns. So excited about doing that, and we hope that this could be something that we can do in other parts of the county. Certainly would work happy to work with any of you if you want to host one in in your district.
That's it. Yeah, and the way you want to involve yourselves, I guess. Man, that's it. Like that's the only thing to do. But I'm just sitting here thinking, and there's so many services that we offer in this county that citizens don't know. If you wanted what saw the concentration.
Right.
I don't know what they do, but the people that want that. I like to help in forest ranger, you know. And these are people that that even though we live in these in these cities, we call them, that don't know about these services, don't understand if they can call on these folks for expertise that they've got in terms of things, you know. I was just sitting there thinking about a park ranger, you know, he said, we can call them by the trees now, you know. Okay, I mean, the forest ranger, those are things that we just don't have knowledge about. So, you know, we know about health, we know about social service, we know about those kinds. We know about those. We should have known the tax office. And we want to update them on all of them. But I'm thinking about those kinds of services, you know, I think if we can just bring some of those folks and expertise and just make them aware for the citizens who begin to to use these services. So those are the kinds of things that any any and we and Ms. Thorne and I went to the to the, we got one Thursday at the exit, which was really about muscle belt. Yeah, and and this and this, yeah, and about the data centers. And it was community involved, and they had good questions, and we we certainly want to operate somewhat and the entertaining questions from the public also. So we want all of you to be there. Anything that you've got that you need to 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 do, just talk to Mr. Simmons about it.
I'll be there when you go.
Well, I think it's a public event, I don't think.
You know, you're right. It's a good concern. I have the same concern. We 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 can get to, you can get together as long as you're not discussing, you know, business and taking action, you know, for example, Ruby Cuddy, we've had announcements for projects, that sort of thing, but it ends up, there is a line this way, you know, we need to be particularly cautious here that it doesn't appear to be and that come up as an actual meeting.
Well.
The alternative is to notice it as an actual meeting.
Well, I don't I don't think we need to notice that as an actual meeting. I don't I don't think because anything we say ever will be taken motion. I think you you hold us to a strict standard. And I think sometimes, I I think that if we're not taking motions or seconded in this, is that I think, but you know, we can be cautious, that's our position in terms of that, but as many that would like to come. You know, we go to, we go to the a tango event, and we might be there. And so still taking advice, but not taking advice like. So anybody would like to come, like this to see them there. Moving on, anything else?
Last thing I'll mention is that we are hosting a nonprofit networking event tomorrow after tomorrow evening at five thirty at our Edgecombe Works Career Campus. We, you know, as part of our getting getting off the list initiative, it it involves identifying who's already doing work in these four focus areas and helping them do more of that good work. So a piece of that is helping our nonprofits to build their capacity. So we want to bring them together so, number one, we can talk a little bit more about getting off the list, let them network with each other to perhaps look for opportunities for collaboration. But also, we have, we develop a partnership with what's called Heart for E N C. It is an organization, they're based in Greenville, but they serve this eastern North Carolina, and they do capacity building training for nonprofits. And they have agreed to do a course, it's an eight-week course, I believe, or eight-session course for nonprofits where they can learn more about, you know, things related to nonprofits to help them grow in their capacity. There's a very minimal charge that I think is two hundred and fifty dollars for the whole class, for everybody in a nonprofit that wants to participate. And we're we're, the county is going to cover that cost, but they provide that service. We've had the opportunity, me and some of the team members went to Greenville to visit them in their facility. They've come and visited our career campus. They're very excited about the things that we're trying to do. And so tomorrow night, at the networking event, we we will announce this training opportunity and invite representatives from nonprofits in the county to sign up for. And that's it for me, Mr. Jeff.
Any other question?
Are we doing commissioner comments?
Yeah.
I I just want to commend staff and for the event on Thursday. I think it was so well received by the entire county. Mr. Matthews did a deep dive in how economic process works. Mr. Evans provided his wealth of knowledge about the county and everything. Our partnership with the partnership, and Bob got up and talked about what that looks like and how that works. It's the most transparent that I've ever seen the county be in how we discuss how a project is talked about, how it comes to fruition, how we get there, what what that looks like. As Bob will say, and not put words in his mouth, it's frustrating because there's only so much that you can share at the time, and we're even limited in what we can share, and we're under NDAs under all of this stuff. And so I think it was so well received by our citizens. The discourse was cordial. There were questions asked, there were answers. I feel like people felt like they were heard, even in the ordinance that came before us tonight. It it their opinions were heard and and by us going back and saying, look, there's more opinions here. Can we continue that discussion? I I think it was government at work the best that it can possibly be at work. So I thank you for every everyone's effort in doing that. I was worried that we were going to call that meeting, and there would be three people sitting out in the audience, and it wasn't that. I mean, there were probably fifty people there, thirty, thirty to fifty people there, all just wanting to learn, not with animosity or or anything like that. So thank you for that. I really do appreciate it. The other thing that I would ask is, as we start to talk about government shutdowns and things are going on with state and funding at the state and all these decisions, we pay lobbyists. I would love to see a legislative review, even if it's an email that gets put in our agenda packet a month. Have them come present to us semiannually. I know that that's a burden to get them to drive here all the time for every for a monthly meeting, but twice a year, when they're in session, come present to us. I mean, I feel like that's.
At least a written report.
That's that's allowed in our contract that we pay them to do. But a written report monthly that gets included in agenda or circulated, I think, would be very well received.
Just like to say, I'll be traveling to Boca County. On Thursday, I'll get sworn in on Friday for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioner Board of Directors. I'm going to be the North Carolina risk for a platoon to that board, and so I actually will sign in Friday under our new president.
And you and you heard the funding could.
Sorry, one more. I I forgot to mention Mr. Spell. I've always talked to him about other things I've gone through and everything, but he also did really well at that meeting and presenting everything. So I do I do apologize. I missed you there. But yes, I'm I'm amazed at the work that he's done and the leadership that he's taken in that role. So thank you.
And all of us, as I said, reflected growth of this county. Or reflects that people are beginning to come and question what we do. And as I said, I've been sitting here for years, and I can see the growth, the questions that are coming to us. Even the request for changes in our ordinances. It reflects the potential for growth that for Kingsborough side and for our county. You know, and also what came out of that mean there were people were really concerned about things that decisions that we make, they have no knowledge of until we can disclose it. Was reflecting about openness, and I think that was a good job in understanding that we do go in a zero session, which we get committed to do, to discuss things that we can't discuss and come out of it. Any other commission?
Yeah, I'd just like to say on October the second, Ms. Pittner, Department of Agent, recognized along with Chairman Wiggins and Mayor Mr. Evans, Ms. Gladys Pitt Schel, celebrating her one hundredth birthday. And most of you probably remember, most of you already know Ms. Schel. And she's a retired registered deeds, and there'll be many things for this county. So I was glad that we recognized her on a very special day for her, and I think it was it was very special for her. And thank thank you everybody that's involved there on behalf of her and her family.
Any other commissions? At this time, ladies and gentlemen, is there most to go in? Close session is close, and then development and then personnel.
Second question.
All in favor, let me know. I'm going to go to side high. All opposed? Thank everybody for coming. We will now be going to the close session.